Meeting, Son of All, Public Housing Authority. Regular Board Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Friday, June 28th, 2024, 10:00 AM, which I'm late. 124K, Center for Circle, Homer, Louisiana. All cell phones and other electric devices used for communication must be turned off or silenced for the duration of the meeting. Mr. Donald, do you have any information?
Yes, hold on a minute. A bad record. Let us pray the Lord's Prayer, finding St. Matthew's Gospel of the Holy Bible. God's Word, the Lord's Prayer. Let us pray together. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive our own, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. The pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Burke, Commissioner Hopeinck, Vice Chair Piku.
Here.
Chair Wamaneber, Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
We have a call.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, order the date from the agenda.
The agenda was to see if it was published.
Document. Public comments, I just got a note that Mr. Adderall likes to speak to us.
Yes.
Ms. Adderall?
I'm sorry? I was gonna wait, speak on, I got a speaker card in, I think on number eight, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, for number eight.
Okay.
He said he was going.
Do you want me to speak now?
Want to do that under yours?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
No, it's the name, it's the speaker card, so he can speak first.
Oh. We have one?
Yeah, he spoke it out.
I'm telling you, I'm speaking on eight, so I'm good to speak now or speak on eight? I'm good either way.
You can be the opposite.
Okay. Uh, do you want to hand those out? I wouldn't have to make the last meeting, uh, but it's definitely very important to me. I believe we're in a housing crisis and it's very important to me that we, uh, we get moving forward on where our next steps are and looking what we can do to address this current housing crisis that we are in. And then I heard that there was a possibility that this building, the BIA towers was gonna be sold or opportunity to be sold. So as of last Wednesday, I had my building inspectors and all go in that building. And as this letter is gonna state, this, that building is not condemned. So we're gonna be, uh, go through a process in here that talks about you gotta respond within so many days, but we're going through the condemnation process on that building because that building needs to be torn down. And the other part of this and not understanding what the plans are, what is, what's in the agenda, you know, I am looking for a plan to take care of the housing for both BIA towers and Center for Circle and what those are gonna look like. Uh, I would love to have a, if it's a five-year plan, but to understand within the next year, uh, how many housing units we're looking to bring back and where we're looking to bring those back. Because my concern is of the people that were in these units, where are they now? Uh, are they in Terrible Parish, are they trying to come back to Terrible Parish? We're gonna make the three-year anniversary of item, and so I feel it's very important that we be more proactive and that we start trying to move a little bit faster. If there's any issues with HUD, I'm gonna work with our Congress people to help make some of those things happen also. Because I'm, look, we're fighting FEMA, we're repairing our buildings right now. I don't understand what's going on with that, but we definitely need to get a plan of what the opportunities are and where we could look at, uh, getting these residents that have been in this place relocated back in Terrible Parish. And so it's only the first thing we need to do, as I understand it, when condemned, that building is not condemned and, you know, look forward from there. And so we're here to answer any questions. Um, and, you know, we're looking to do whatever we gotta do to make sure that we're making progress with that condemnation of that building, uh, at a timeframe that is required by the parish to do that, so. Anything else you need to cover or anything else you guys wanna add?
Unless they have any question.
Yeah, there's any questions again? We can address those now or we can address those, uh, through the channels that people aren't here, so.
I have a question, so, did the building get discondemned?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Right, good, yes.
Brianna Ogeron, Council.
Yeah, put it on.
Okay. Brianna Ogeron, Council, EDCB. Um, so the building is declared an unsafe structure. Uh, we're not going through the condemnation process of the recent payment code, or instead using Chapter Six of the Building Code, so it's been declared an unsafe structure. Is this actually the same, same thing as a condemnation? That's why he's calling that because it's really, um, the end is the same. So it's just another way to reach that end. Uh, so if you go to the second page, it describes the notice and you'll see it's bolded here that when the unsafe structure is found, it's required to be demolished. Um, Archie Building Official, Bo Dupre, he went, declared it an unsafe structure. And if you look at here, the next paragraph, I don't know if it all very color or not, but it is not. Okay, so you can see under each bullet item, we have the reason. So these are the reasons structures are unsafe. And in the chief building official, he put what he found on his inspection had been in these sentence, so you can see that. So same end, you know, condemnation, unsafe structure, just a different way to reach that end. Does that answer all the questions?
Yes, and Drew?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? That's how we're consulting as well, he attended, um...
I'm sitting in for Jamie McDaniel, it's a salsa group. The only thing that he asked me to say is that the new AD firm Broadwater is gonna help push for the BIA towers fifty percent. We continue to keep turning the packages to FEMA for fifty percent review. FEMA say they'll be able to review these packages within four weeks, but we aren't expecting the results back, back quickly, and then everything else is about Center for Circle.
So my, my understanding, based on the meetings I've attended, is that we were told by HUD to demolish, that we were waiting to understand what level we had to go to, that we received that information. But then in the last meeting I went able to attend, it was a conversation about not doing any demolition itself.
Right.
And so.
That's the April meeting, um...
So I just wanna make, you know, at this point, you know, we've done, we've done our building inspection, um, and I just wanna look at, and I know there was some conversations about FEMA, um, accepting, or HUD accepting something for FEMA and something with the environmental and, so all that being said, I would, I would think you better take what I've done today, whoever you're working with, and say.
Right. So I believe, I believe condemnation allows us.
Right.
To get to the fifty percent.
Correct, that's why I was asking.
My only concern, my only concern is what you said is that y'all are going the roundabout because it's unsafe structure to, uh...
Not a roundabout, we're just using the Building Code instead of the condemnation.
Right. That's the only question I have for Jamie, is to find out.
Okay.
If that roundabout, or whatever it is, you know, the code.
It's a means to the same end.
Right. Because I, I remember him saying FEMA doesn't care about code, so they just gotta figure that happens, let me know, so that I can make a call, well, I need a call to make sure they care about code.
Right.
Okay.
So that, that, that's the main thing. And then the only thing he asked me to say about, you know, Center for Circle, I might as well say it now, we have fifty-five panels to be repaired for the fencing on the perimeter, um, the cantilever gates for the front and for this temporary facility. And, uh, those projects have been advertised and security cameras will be shipped mid-July.
In full transparency, we're getting ready to do the same thing for those buildings also. So be a lookout for another letter coming once that is completed. Um, and again, you know, to me, you can't talk about the means to an end, uh, what I'm looking for is a plan.
Right.
That, whether this building is torn down or not, we gotta, we gotta house those residents and, and, you know, if it's three hundred, is it a hundred now? You know, if it's Center for Circle, they had a hundred facilities here, if it's fifty residents, if it's two hundred residents, where are they at? You know, what are we looking at to, as far as how we're tracking those residents? And perhaps looking to come back or all of them or more currently look to come back? I feel like we need to get to that point sooner rather than later, so that we can figure out if it's, you know, demolishes, build something here, whatever it is, I just think, you know, by the end of the year, we ought to have something solid of what that looks like for the future.
So can I explain to you what we were waiting on? We're not trying to rebuild at BIA's house.
Right.
But we're waiting to see how much money we're gonna get because we spoke about the insurance company and, so to rebuild three hundred units, I don't, we don't, the housing authority don't have enough money.
And I know what you're going through FEMA, but right now you do have the funding to tear that building down. And, and at certain point, from a quality of life perspective, our residents need to see progress, right? And so when people see that, I won't have anything new till that's torn down, it's a step in the right direction and, you know, we've had to go through the same battle and conversation with FEMA on stuff we tore down and stuff that, you know, the parish said we're gonna come out upfront, we had to sue our insurance company, you know, we've gone through this whole same battle. Uh, but, you know, here we are, more than three years after the storm, we really need to make some progress. And again, my concern of the residents, like, the people that were displaced, uh, are they in Terrible Parish, are they out of Terrible Parish, are they trying to get back in Terrible Parish? And so where are we at from a numbers perspective to understand, uh, how many people, you know, we have seven hundred around probably around six hundred families now not living in their households, that are living in FEMA trailers and camper trailers and all. And every time we go through a storm season, that's people we have, you know, we need to be concerned about, we have to evacuate, they can lose their belongings again. So really to understand the numbers of where people are, who's trying to get back, and, and again, is it, do we have to build three hundred units? Do we have to build a hundred units? And then us trying to help push on, and a lot of them doing the same thing with the DA, sending them a letter going, your buildings need to be torn down, right? So again, we wanna make progress, we wanna show our residents that, you know, we are making some progress when it comes to recovery, uh, you know, and that's where we're coming from, and that's what we're looking for. And so my request is, uh, you know, as soon as we get this information, if we get this information in a month, as far as the numbers, I'd like to see that, but to have a plan by the end of the year of how to address those numbers is really what I'm requesting today.
Would you like to be copied on the emails? Because housing, we have a list of where the residents are, like the ones that we still get in contact with, um, because they are like through different, um, other housing authorities, some of them on Section Eight. Um, how, Tiffany and Lisa reach out to the residents, um, monthly? And we send a monthly report to HUD, giving an update where those residents are. Would you like to be copied on the emails?
I don't have to be copied, are you getting that information?
Uh...
Kelly?
Candace?
If Candace is the information of where they are.
We haven't had a report from Candace on the...
Kelly directly emailed that information. Uh, and she's the one I'm working with, going to, to understand where we are, you know, from all of our housing, not just what we're dealing with in these two situations, but, uh, it's very important to me that we make some serious progress.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention, even though BIA towers is still, we still can move forward with, um, replacing, not, uh, replacing, um, BIA towers, it's just the location, finding somewhere, um, I would want them to go, I would wanna rebuild BIA towers next to Barker GMC, um, reached out to him a few times, he hasn't returned my call back. Um, I think one of the commissioners mentioned in the past about, um, is that Shreveau? St. Bridget?
Yeah.
Across from St. Bridget Church, they have like fifty-five acres that's there, as well, so we did discuss that, but I never got the okay to move forward to purchase the lane because we don't know exactly how many units we're going to bring back. I know we don't have at least twenty-five to thirty people that pass that BIA towers in, just with the, the money. So hopefully FEMA can move a little bit faster so I can know exactly how much money I have to bring back to the board and say, hey, we can do X, Y, and Z, but...
I think we've been able to make a lot of positive progress with FEMA. I know Kelly is, and I have, having early conversations on this, so, you know, I, I like to share this with everybody, no matter what issue you deal with, personally and professionally, you can ask three questions. Whatever you've done, what are you doing, what's holding you up? And when it comes to what's holding you up, what do you think we should do to make progress? And if you have a trouble making progress and we can help, please reach out to us, let us know. And that's what I'm saying, I want, I want a constant conversation about, these are the numbers, we're trying to buy a property, we're having this held up, we're gonna, I'll get involved, I'll make phone calls, I'll go to whatever lengths we have to go to to help us move forward in this problem. So.
Okay.
We have our commitment from the parish to do whatever we have to do to fix our housing crisis.
Thank you.
So, I hadn't said that before.
My question was, and it doesn't sound like it, HUD's not gonna require you to do a one-for-one replacement, so you had three hundred units at BIA towers, are they gonna require you to rebuild three hundred units?
It's not, I don't have to build three hundred units back because at that time, I think I wasn't, I had two hundred and seventy-five occupied, so I wasn't even a hundred percent, um, occupied at BIA's house.
I think we applied for two sixty-five.
Two sixty, I know it was two sixty-five, seventy-five, something like that. So I, I don't see them saying, hey, Avitra and I, that's the HUD director, we spoke about it before, Brian Gage, so it's not a one-to-one, I don't have to come back with three hundred of those.
So I guess the next step is to find out to condemnation.
This right here, I, I just got the email this morning and I, but they came and I was out the office, so I, I'm gonna work on this, and our attorney had it as well, so I forwarded to you and Jamie, so hopefully once we send this to FEMA, um...
From what I understand, it should help us get to fifty percent, which is a good thing.
Oh, I, I can make a small clarification, just when we talk to your people that you need to talk to, so a condemnation is a formal route to declare something an unsafe structure. So the route that we took is just an emergency declaration of an...
We can hear you here, ma'am, so she can...
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so basically, a condemnation is a formal process to declare something an unsafe structure. So this letter, we've just taken a shortcut and said, it's an unsafe structure without going through the formal process due to the emergency situation. So that helps when you...
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can swap the contact.
Definitely, definitely.
Because I think that we need to, we need Deborah to know this, we, we need all that information.
Right, right.
And throw a line of communication so that we can do our job.
Yes, please give me a card or your contact info, we'll, um...
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? And, um, if we wanna connect before the next meeting, like, uh, whatever we can do to assist in this process, we agree with you, so. I do wanna make sure Kelly is included in all, any information she needs as far as numbers, whatever part of the process, uh, she is my proxy to give me what I need so I can make decisions, so.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Any more?
Y'all have any?
This is all, no, y'all have any question, Mr. Donald? Nobody?
It's...
Nobody has. Moving on, yeah, moving on. Okay, approval of minutes for May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, regular board meeting. Can I get an approval?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Donald, second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Okay, he's the number seven, item seven, bills and communications. A, approval of pay vouchers for the period, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-four to June fourteen, twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Got a second? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Say aye, all opposed, motion passes. Okay, monthly financial reports, March twenty-twenty-four. Memo from Fiat County to Board of Commissioners, balance sheet for March twenty-twenty-four, income and expense statements for March twenty-twenty-four, public housing financial assessment score for the month of March twenty-twenty-four, five banquetal allegations. All good?
Mm-hmm.
Eight, reports from Secretary, Executive Director, Agency Update, Ms. Nikita?
Um, the agency update is in all, um, the package, but I have a few things that I wanna elaborate on.
Good.
Um, we'll be going out for, um, grass cutting and tree cutting for Center for Circle. As you can see, we only have two maintenance guys and it's the summer months and it's been raining a lot, so it's hard for, um, maintenance to stay on top of it, so, um, we will be going out for the grass cutting in Center for Circle and the tree cutting. Also, um, IGH contracting, one, the bid for the, um, panels, to replace all of the panels that's...
The gate, the...
Yes, yes. Um, and that's gonna help with, was, we just found that, I think this morning, that, um, some, I guess, what do you call, a squatter was sleeping one eighty-two, so we just had to call the cops. Um, we've been, they're having thefts, stealing the hot water heaters, we had a water leak again because somebody broke in, stole some copper and the water went all over the, um, apartment. So I think putting those panels back up and getting that gate, um, at the front of Center for Circle, that's what Drew's mentioned.
Right.
We, I think that would help deter some of the, um, the, the thefts that's going on because we don't know who's doing it. Um, we, our camera should come in.
Mid, well, mid-July.
Mid-July, so hopefully that would help as well because, yeah, we, we've been having a whole lot of thefts, again, they're starting up again and they're breaking inside of the units, that's why you see that they're boarded up. We partnered with HPD and did a sweep, and as we did the sweep, maintenance went behind them to board up each unit, but they hadn't made it to one, it was one eighty-two or one eighty-six, and they found somebody sleeping there this morning. Um, we also did the grass cutting and tree cutting and Duson also, the other property that HUD gave us to oversee.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's in the water leak. Okay, Drew's cool, already. Um, I had court, federal court in New Orleans regarding a grievance residence, we have an executive session where we would discuss the settlement that I, I think, and our attorney think that that was a, for us to get it over with, to move forward. Um, Ms. Shara and I are attending, um, NARO, um, it's for public housing preservation and development, and that would be June, I'm sorry, July eleventh?
Next week.
Yes, well, we got the next. Also, I attended a HATMA training in Rain, um, Louisiana, and the new rules for, um, HATMA has to go into effect by January, um, first, twenty-twenty-five. I'm gonna give y'all a copy of the, um, the new rules, so when we do, um, start the rebuild, um, that's gonna have to be a part of our policy when the residents return. Um, a, a lot of rules have changed. Pre-legal, but they changed, so we have to follow those new laws, um, by January first when we start the rehousing. Um, the five-year action plan will be, um, submitted on Monday. I have, um, got a document package, I have to upload each file one by one. I got Mr. Um, Jason's, um, signature on one of the things that I needed, so I'll be, after Ms. Shara signed the last form, I'll be able to submit the, um, document package, the five-year annual was already submitted, the document package is the second part of it, that I can submit for, um, HUD approval for our five-year action plan for the CFP.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, not sure if y'all had any more questions on anything that's on there, um...
Jamie, you have any questions? Donald?
Also, that, um, form that, the inspection that she just passed, I had put one at you all's station as well for, on the board to review, so y'all can have a copy as well at your leisure to review. So y'all, we all could be on the same page, so whenever y'all have time to look at it, I just got it this morning. And then if you have any questions and if I can't answer those questions, reach out to somebody from the parish or salsa, or our attorney as well, because he has a copy of it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Mr. Burke?
Body, moving on. Guess you already did, number nine, discussion of possibility, actions, calling a public hearing relatives to revolution number ten sixty-two dash twenty-four, the Homer Terrabone Housing Authority, twenty-twenty-four annual action and five-year plan, that's what you just...
Yes, that's the documents that I'm...
Discussion impossible.
Yeah, I need a motion for that.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion, motion, Mr. Donald, Mr. Jean? Second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, item ten, discussion of possible action related to revolution number D ten six three dash twenty-four, amending Duson Housing Authority, twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-one budget.
This is for, um, me to be able to move the money from capital fund to operating because this agency, um, funds were recaptured for the previous years.
Yes.
And in order for them not to recapture, um, from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one, I have to move, we'll get board approval to move the monies from cap fund to operating subsidy so we can spend the monies on, um, the grass cutting, tree cutting, um, and just the rebuild of that agency as well. So I just need a motion.
Need a motion.
Yes.
A motion?
Circle. Mr. Donald and Mr. Jean, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed, motion carried. Item eleven, discussion of possible action related to resolution number D ten four, ten, ten sixty-four dash twenty-four, adopting Duson Housing Authority Financial Institution authorizing Signature Policy.
That's for my board to sign off on the payments. Um, the whole board there resigned, and of course, like, when I sign checks here, I have to have a, a second signature, so the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Once I sign the checks for payment, you all, one of you all can sign off on the, um...
We need a motion for...
Yes.
Well, motion?
Got a motion? Second by Mr. Jean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed, motion carried. Item twelve, consideration of settlement in Shepherds versus Homer Terrabone Housing Authority, document twenty-two dash oh four nine eight, US District Court, Eastern District of Louisiana.
That's what we wanna have the one executive session for, so I can go over the details of the settlement.
Where we going?
Well...
Row call first.
Okay, we need a row call, go to the executive session, please.
A motion first.
Motion.
A motion.
Second by Mr. Jean, all in favor, say aye. All, any opposed? Okay.
Commissioner Burke? Is he already? Vice Chair Piku?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Where we going?
We go on maintenance, um, two years.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna bring the phones, I'll bring them. Commissioner Burke? A motion?
Need a motion, go back into regular session?
A motion.
I'm second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Commissioner Burke? Commissioner Burke?
Here, here.
Vice Chair Piku?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Okay, okay, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the settlement and authorize the ED, Executive Director of Homer Terrabone Housing Authority, to resolve the claim of the remaining residents pursuant to the terms agreed upon the record in federal court.
Got a second? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, motion carried. Thirteen, Commission's comments, any comments?
We discussed, um, you and I talked, spoke about July's meeting, we only have the one thing that's on there that's about to be... Um, if we have to have a special meeting, then we can call one, but as you and I discussed, I don't see holding a meeting for just, I think, wait, 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 for an hour? Official journal, we can put that on the August, um, meeting.
Okay, Mr. Donald, Mr. Jean, what we're talking about right now, we have a meeting next month on, whatever it is, July...
July fifth, I'm sorry, July twenty-fifth.
We're looking at, Jamie, postpone that meeting or just doing away with that meeting? And if we need something during the month, we could call a special session and have a meeting among us to do it. You wanna make a motion on that, please?
Motion?
Motion, second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
August twenty-second.